Hello, I am Jesse Walker and I'm running for Georgetown City Council. It is because I care. Born and raised right here in the city limits of Georgetown. So I know the byways and highways of the county and the city. And one other thing that I care about in our local community is that growth isn't being displayed on every citizen within the city limits of Georgetown. I care so much about the burdens with the high utility wages and it doesn't reflect it too costably. Too many of you are being hit and impacted by this outrageous utility rates. I care that we have lost two major industrial plants with that and hundreds of jobs. We can accept our reality as our future. Georgetown deserves a brighter path and moving forward, we need to build water, opportunity, equity, and community investment. That's why I've decided to step forward and I've joined two other candidates to form what we have called the People's Team because that is what I represent, you, the people. Even if you're outside like a voting district in the county, we still represent you. I don't represent one particular person, I represent all persons within the city of Georgetown. I am Jesse Walker and I'm a candidate for Georgetown City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Hi, my name is Sharon Middleton. I'm a candidate for Georgetown City Council. I, most of my life, I lived in Brooklyn. I'm not sure about twenty-three years ago. I have five children, three of them graduated from Georgetown High School. So that means that I'm well-vested in Georgetown because I would love for my children to come back, but there's nothing here for them. But I have hope that it's gonna happen and hopefully, when we are, we will be able to make the change that's needed. The reason why I'm running is because I believe in accountability, I believe in transparency, and I want to be the fairest. Since I've been here, some of these things have not happened for me and I want to make sure that it happens for the next set of people that do decide I come and make Georgetown their home. I want to make it fair, transparent, for the people who live here and right now that's not happening. So the reason I believe that I would be the best candidate is because for simple fact, I've been through a lot of things that everybody here has been through and I'm pretty sure that I can make a change. I don't know how much of a change I can make, but the one thing that I do know is that I'm your candidate for Georgetown City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. And then we begin with our formal questions and Ms. Milton will start again. So what skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
First of all, when I first came to Georgetown, I worked in Georgetown because they took it as K D because my background led me to come out on y'all. That's first. I've been in community service for over twenty years. I work with the Georgetown outreach ministry. I work under the 100th Year Club. We did a lot of food charities and giveaways. Currently, I sit on the BGA Board of the County. I sat on the parents' board for about twelve years before they dismantled it. Well, I don't know if it's to say that I'm the best qualified. I know that I love first and what's going on in the county. I know what's going on in the city because I go to every single meeting. If I'm not out of town, I'm at the city council, I'm at the county council, I'm even at the school board. That's why I believe that because of those meetings that I go to, I have a lot of information that a lot of people will not know because they weren't there. So I put that, that would make me a great candidate because I have the information that everybody missed out on.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Second question, skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
My skills and experience come from, I say that I'm not employed, I'm not transplanted, I'm unemployed. I was born right here in the city of Georgetown. I know what it's like growing up as a child, living in what they call substandard housing and I know what it's like receiving an education within the city limits of Georgetown. And I'm proud to say, being a graduate of Georgetown High School when segregation came to an end in the eighties and I strive. I've always dreamed of living in this big immaculate home, the white picket fence, five children, but that's not a reality in our city limits. I had the opportunity to move away and live in Norfolk, Virginia. And that was to see what another life is like. And then they, Norfolk, Virginia has moved. But when I came back home, the city of Georgetown still looks the same and that's thirty-two years that I'm back here. There's no place like home. So now I believe that with us working with community organizations, grassroots organizations, we can make a real impact on what's needed in the area. Of technical housing, low-income residential homes, we can make a real impact if we come together. And what my skills are with that? I, for the past twenty-five years or more, have worked with community and economic development, bringing funding within the city limits of Georgetown and as well as the county such as infrastructure projects, affordable housing. Rent rating is the story of my life. So that's how I feel that I can serve just with my knowledge and wisdom and being here within the city limits of Georgetown.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker, let's start with you on the second question. What are the most important challenges or priority issues specific to your city and how propose to address them collectively? And I have recently began a city hall for residents to address these issues.
That's a good question. And with me and working with the city, I've been attending the meetings, but what is the purpose of the meetings? What are we doing beyond the meetings? What can we do? We need to do education and outreach. We need to partner with our educational system. Our youth are struggling just to obtain a high school diploma and that's unacceptable. Our elderly folks are living, well, not only are they living on a fixed income, but we all are on a fixed income. We need to do more education and outreach. What do I plan to do? Just that. At these meetings, we can have meetings after meetings, but I want to do more than just have meetings. I want to get with each community members that have advocates and leaders and bring them together, all sectors of the city and sit down, let me know what your neighbors want. Let me know what you feel you need in your community and mostly what needs to be addressed and how do you feel that we should come about bringing a resolution? So my, your thoughts, your issues are mine and I want to get together with you all to make those changes. Not only changes, but improvements. That ends a better change.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, second question. What are the most important challenges or priority issues specific to your city and propose to address them? And I have recently began a city hall residence to address these issues.
I believe that our biggest problems are the spending. I believe that our bodies are not going to where they need to go. I believe that they're not being, the transparency of where our funding should be is there. I think that's the biggest challenge is to look at our budget and see how we can break that down to make it make sense because right now it's not making sense. Why are we still digging a hole in the ground to fix water pipes? Why are we still outsourcing jobs that could be here in Georgetown? The reason I believe that these things need to be addressed first, that they can just see where their money, their tax dollars are going. Once they see where their tax dollars are going, then they'll be, they'll sit down and say, okay, this is, this is the next time. We have a drainage problem. We, in a lot of areas, in all of the areas there are a lot of drainage problems. That shouldn't have already taken the killer of our most important, but we did it. I need people to show up at these meetings. One person showing up is not enough. If you sit at this, at any meeting and you're the only one there, that's a problem. You can't sit, you can't throw a rock and hide your head. So basically, I learned that from here. But what I would, that's where I would start with the budget. See where the money's going. See how we can make it make sense. Have the people come out to these meetings so that they have a voice on what's going on, what's happening. Because when you're not informed, you're in the toilet, you're gonna be laughing. So please, I would suggest everyone, even if it's once a month, this is one meeting a month. There's three meetings that you can choose from, county council, city council, school board. All of those meetings make a difference in the state, in our community. That, my main objective needs to start up the budget because that's what we need.
Thank you. Next question is also for you, Ms. Milton, let's start with you. How well are the needs of low-income residents within the city of Georgetown being met? And what more anything needs to be done?
They're not being met. Our rents are really, really high. The homes that most people live in are in need of repair. We don't have a lot of people who do a lot of charity. So we have to apply for grants or we have to apply for help with habitat or whatever community, whatever agency will help. We have a problem with the infrastructure right now because I believe that not only are we being overloaded, we're getting overloaded a little more because of all the housing that's coming here that's not affordable for the people who live here, which would be nice if we could do that. The, the main thing that I think that we basically need to do is, again, come out to these meetings, make a demand of the things that the community needs so that that way we can make a difference. Housing is the most important thing right now. We're lacking, we're struggling. If it's not what it being built is what makes the amount of rent that's needed to be paid for those houses. So I hope I answered that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, Ms. Walker, second question.
And looking at the housing stock within the city limits of Georgetown, it is not where it should be or could be. And we need, that's a problem. We're looking at the essential workers such as educators, the firefighters, the public works, not department, I'm thinking of the city police department. All of them need to be able, not only to work here, but they should be afforded the opportunity to live here, especially our educators because our youth, I believe our youth is our now and our future. We need to get in a grassroots organization that will help them be able to build a home and become a permanent residence within the city and the county of Georgetown. Those teachers, they have to drive from Williamsburg County or Red County and some are even leaving our city limits because they cannot afford to live here. And that's, that's a problem. If you can't live where they're created, we need to address that. How will I address that? I want to bring in grassroots organization that deals with housing and so we can make that possible. I do not want to see those apartment buildings being, being built again that costs $2,000 or more to live and it doesn't even include your utility bill. So what I want to do is work with our administration and we come up with a resolution. Not only a resolution, but a change and a shift in our atmosphere and the housing market right here in the city limits of Georgetown.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Question is to you, Ms. Walker, next one. The city of Georgetown has an immediate and urgent need for a table or course hours. We cut the list. How are you sure that all feature currently developed address and meet these needs?
I can address that if I get some rest and a penny. Ninety-five percent of the city, I will not approve of that because ninety-five percent of the city are the average American citizen who works, survive, have families. We have grassroots here, we have ears property here and they aren't even coming back to live within the city of Georgetown. So therefore, as I stated before, I want to bring in grassroots organization that specializes in housing, dealing with the credit, put you in the house that you can afford and put you in a house that you can keep for a lifetime and you can pass that down to your, your grandchildren, children's grandchildren that still want to live in the city limits of Georgetown and keep our city living.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, second question.
That's a question that I asked the administration earlier, baseball development. I asked them, when the developers want to come and they want to build things, what's the, what's the game plan? What could be, what's the, what's the take? What does the city get out of it? And the city is not getting anything out of these people coming in. So my thing is, what I would do to make development a little bit better is basically, if they do not cater to the city residents, if they do not care to a majority of, the majority of the people here that lives in the city, then they're not doing us any good. So as Jesse said, I would not approve of that because for simple fact, we need somebody to sustain Georgetown. We need jobs, we need training, we need, we need and we're not getting what we need. So yes, development would have to actually do better than what they're doing now. It had to be a better contract than what we have. And then also, we have, we're creating jobs for everybody else. Let's create a job for a person to actually oversee, to make sure that these developers are doing what they promise that they're gonna do. Because a lot of people are like, oh, I said, they told me I can be there because they're gonna do five percent of, 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 you know, moderate income people and it's not happening. So let's hold them accountable and we need, we need someone to oversee that.
Okay. Next question, Ms. Milton. Do you see residents that have set with aggressive annual increases to electricity utility bills across the board within the city of Georgetown? Please explain what can be done to stop or minimize the increases? And do you feel the needs for the aggressive increases? Why are they not? Ms. Milton?
Okay. The utility bills, I saw the baseball, the current mayor and she said that we did not have any increases since 2010, I believe it was. That's not true. Do we need increases? Of course we're gonna need increases because we need to be able to repair the things that we need repaired. The way that these rates jump up so fast where no one could actually give a grasp of it, they didn't even budget for it because it happens so abruptly and so deep. So can we stop? We can't stop it. We may be able to slow down. We may be able to do different things to minimize what we're using such as unplugging things that we're not using. Right now until we're in the seat, there's nothing that can be done because these rates are gonna continue to go up until 20, uh, 2028. So right now, we're, we're a rescue mode, we're, we're, we're in survival mode. We gotta learn how to limit what we're dealing with right now and take advantage of all of the opportunities that they give us to help pay these bills. But right now, let's just be in survival mode, let's try to make things better. But again, I truly believe that if we slow this down.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, second question.
I have been doing some research within the city's budget and being a grant holder for the city of Georgetown, city and county of Georgetown. And getting grants, you have to report what you charge for utility fees. And the average with Georgetown is fourteen cents kilos. And that was low. And I understand that you have to increase your rate of fees. It has to be in order to survive. So at this point with this rate increase in the loss of two major industries and a lot of business that's closed, I think, I believe that they didn't take that into consideration. And they went transparent and I want to become a wealthy transparent to address because you all need to know why those rates have improved and where does that rate increase going to within the departments of the city of Georgetown. I believe that we should think about renewable energy and bring in more programs that help you to do and decrease your rates. Insulate your housing. Get any of the better lighting in your housing. We went from the regular wells, now we have the L A V and it's supposed to save you seventy cents, seventy cents or more on your electrical use. But on the average household, I don't understand how you live in this house and we are all creatures of habit. We're gonna eat the ten hours a day and we can only utilize a television one every time. We don't have every television on in the house at the council. So I want to become a transparent and explain where and how these rates have come. But I think it was a good move because of the loss of the jobs and the houseovers that affected us because they have to pay the utility bills too.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. The next question is also for you, Ms. Walker. The city of Georgetown has a vast homeless and are couples of citizens who call the lackadaisical non-lethal structures homeless. What should the city of Georgetown do to address the safe space for peak periods of extreme heat in summer and sub freezing sick temperatures in the winter that require five to three weeks for those citizens?
Again, working with grassroots organizations, looking into whether there's age of program that is several houses that are substandard, that needs proper insulation, that needs heating and cooling. We need to become a more productive housing industry. Addressing the homeless shelter. There are a lot of abandoned houses and the closed businesses within the city limits of Georgetown. Why can't you partner with them and say, can we use this building to utilize a temporary homeless shelter? At least get them off the streets at night. Partner with the individuals that needs the help. A homeless person can almost be a helpful person because you never know their story and they can be there to help us, but we are not providing that opportunity to become a productive citizen. Even though you're homeless, you still have a voice within this where you live. But if we're not concerned enough to take people off the streets and just give them a hot meal and a hot shower, they may have a problem and that's something we really do need to address.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
There are, there is a building that would be perfect for a heating and cooling center, a temporary housing for the homeless. But the one problem that I found out about that property was that because the city doesn't own it, it couldn't use a block rent to sustain it. And I'm learning as I go. So in learning this, if there's a way to partner with, like Jesse said, if there's a way that the city can partner with an individual that does, that the building does not belong to the city but going to share the responsibilities in some kind of way so that they can keep people safe. People, and that's not just for homeless people. There's people like Jesse said, that have something that happened. Maybe in their house it's just, I can't afford to heat it all day. Maybe there's a place I can go and stay long until it's time for me to turn that heat on because I can't afford to have it on all day. We need to start figuring out another way of doing things that the heart of the people and all the people of Georgetown, or if anybody walks through or goes through Georgetown needs to at least feel safe. And I don't think that's happening, but if there is a way to partner with individuals outside of this, outside of what the city owns to make sure that we have a heating and cooling center and it's a perfect location, but it's not in the right jurisdiction in the sense where that's the wrong word. It's not owned by the city, so therefore we cannot do anything with it. So that's what I, I need.
Thank you. Next question is also for you, Ms. Milton. You just mentioned public safety. So do you have any plans for how our community can further address the violence criminal activities specifically gun violence and drug activities affect non-teenage, but also opioid addictions among the more single population?
Can you repeat that, ma'am?
Sure. We're looking at addressing violence, criminal activities, gun violence, drug activities among youth, but also opioid addictions among the more single population.
I'm not sure how to address that other than let's say our police need to be more proactive. They need to be more proactive in helping our communities. They're trying and knowing what to do, how to do a window dinner. So they need to be able to do. Most, maybe need to get more police officers in the city limits so that that way all the areas can be covered and, and it can be monitored. We also need to, in a sense, try to deal with the parents of these young people who are rolling out and doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Maybe it may be a cost to them, it'll be a bigger cost for the situation. So my, my goal would be to incorporate more police officers and make sure that these officers are intact, that they were not intact to where they're out there beating down the doors and kicking in car. No, be proactive, be a community officer. Talk to these children, let them know there's something better out there, show them. Then, and I have to say, but in New York, they have a police academy for young people. Basically, the police were involved with like after-school programs and doing things with them on a quarterly basis. So maybe if we incorporate more community service with the community people that we, we pay, maybe we'll have a better outcome.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, the second question.
Yes. My friend, we are on the same level. And with anything that I do, it's going to require funding and have to look at the budget now because of public safety. Because I believe and I feel that they should be forming employees. You can get your education at a young age, teach them, what's the purpose of a gun? Why should you have a gun? Why would you want a gun? Guns don't kill people. The person that has a gun does that. But as we all know, in our educational system, we need to reach those children at a very early age, starting at preschool and teaching them life skills. Teaching them that you are a conductor. Teaching them that you are a productive citizen. Uh I believe that I should also partner with the police department academy and the city. Partner, form a partnership with them and so we can become more aggressive and productive and bring it down from such as putting that gun down initiative that I started a few years ago. Uh and just getting the youth, talk to each other. Because the fifth and sixth year population, we're not committing crimes. It's our future. And those are starting at eighteen years old to twenty-five years old. That's enough of guns in their hand. So we need to reach out to them. We need to get more community neighbor neighbor watch. And come to the table with them with the police department and make it, see what we can do to decrease the uses of gun violence.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, we'll start with you again this question. So talk about some of our concerns and issues that are facing the city and people in the city. Now, why don't you put your vision on, vision goals if you will? If you received a one million dollar grant to use to the city in any way you want, what would you do with it and why?
Build a new city? But in doing so in preparation for that, as I stated, I represent the entire city of Georgetown. And I want to go to those that have been in that neighborhood for twenty years or more because they know they're in it. And I want to sit down, Ms. Sallison, tell me what you have done within your community. What do you want? What do you need? Do you want a piazza there? If I was to, what is a piazza? But we have to become creative thinkers because we've been doing the same thing, the same way for so long. And that is why we're sitting here today in the same position. I took that number and I want you to tell me what you feel should be done, like in the airport. We would better street lights up there. That's what we do. Over in the West End, we would more sidewalks. That's what we're going to do. I could only take this million dollars but so far, but let's keep it in reason. And I want to, your problem is my problem. So let's take this million dollars and make it a solution to some of the problems.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, how would you use the million dollars?
My uh my, the first thing I have to do is definitely look at the needs of the whole city. The whole city is is very diverse. That woman in the cooling center that I hear about in Charleston all the time and in in every other area, it is a benefit. It is a benefit because not only it provides food, it provides shelter, it provides stability. Um anything after that is free game and definitely I would definitely take the input of everybody else who would like to contribute to that. We had a food pantry at this one building that I had at one time. Um it was amazing. A food pantry. Uh this, can I say, the first thing I would do with that million dollars is, if that money could be sent along, make it so that it can be able to house at least fifty people because you'll be amazed at how many people walking around here at night. You would be amazed. So um once everybody sees what I would, what I would do with that million dollars, that may bring everybody else in to try to help out as well. Because I think that sometimes when you do more for somebody, they're going to give you more.
Thank you so much. May I offer you some questions that were generated by the folks in our office? And we're going to invite us on the ladies now. That this one is from Ms. Milton. Ms. Milton, you've been a visible and active presence at community events and meetings. Could you clear it out on our platform and share the key initiatives we're currently working on? Additionally, when elected, how would you collaborate with your fellow council members, including those from different political affiliations, to bring these initiatives to creation?
My vision for city of Georgetown would be to actually bring everybody together. Basically, um wow, that's a, that's a good question. Um I would definitely have to say that working together with everybody is going to be key to having anything done. So because we done, we have to sit down and have a conversation in order to put everything on the table and we're going to figure out what we're going to do. I've done that with some of them already. Um reaching across the table is not a problem. Uh getting that problem solved is because people say things all day and will not achieve that, um the goal that's set out. I just hope that if I am elected, everything that I put forth for the city and for the communities, for all of the communities, will be taken seriously.
Thank you so much. Ms. Walker, I have a different question for you. You're a member of your deep rapport with Georgetown's youth and I love a critical level of concern on us, especially underserved areas like the West End. If elected, what are two concrete initiatives you would be willing to engage in educating residents who may not share your background or understanding of any challenges faced by the homeless communities?
I love the children. And I wish it just, I have raised three boys within the city limits of Georgetown. And working with the youth helps me see a need because I'm very cool. And I expect them to keep the city growing. They're educated. You would be amazed at listening to the youth and what they see, but what they are not according to the opportunity. Because some of us are just secondhand kids and won't give them the chance or opportunity to give me the vision, what we see and what they. I would even be working with the youth, standing by the youth, doing what's necessary to keep the city of Georgetown going, the generation of women. I believe we should have had the youth development programs here and still keep in bringing the robotics program. You see what's going on there? We're going to the robotics system. Um I grew up watching the Jetsons. Anybody remember the Jetsons? You didn't think we could have a phone in our car, but we do. Well, do we have fly cars? And we have these right here within the city limits of Georgetown that is so creative, but are not afforded the opportunity to help our future, our future. Because we're going to the robot age. But guess who makes those robots? Humans, humans. So I love the youth. I love hanging out with the youth. I'm not the youth, but I stay young with the youth. And I believe the God's spectrum is the youth is now and we need to make it possible for them to be the future. And so they can pass on the tools because these uh baby boos, the Gen Zs, the millennials, millennials, they have some very creative thoughts and ideas. And so, yes, um I try to keep in touch with the age group of eighteen to thirty-five. Why? Because they need to know one thing. Register to vote because your vote is your horse. And if you want to see a great impact, because a lot of our youth are not even coming back here because they don't have a reason. But I want to be that electric efficient to let them know you are the why you should come back here.
Thank you so much. Now this will go to the feature gene. We'll start with Ms. Milton. What experience do you have with the multi-million dollar budget?
I'm not afraid to say that I don't. I'm not afraid to say that this one is something new to me. I'm not afraid to say that once I get that those numbers in front of me, they may not over, they may overwhelm me. But the one thing that I I know that we're definitely going to have is a team around me that's going to walk me through it. And if I don't, then I would give it to me that they will walk me through it. The problem is that a lot of people, I'm not going to say a lot of people, some people not admit it. They can't do something instead of faking it. Not faking it. I call people like to data check myself. So that's not going to stop once I become a candidate, the ones I become, how I'm personally.
Ms. Walker, second question?
My experience with working with the multi-million dollar budget, um it comes from my career in working with community and economic development. And as I stated, granting grants to come within the city and county is a priority for bringing that money here. That money is not only from the local level, that money comes from the federal and state level. And there are guidelines that you must adhere to. And you judge if you do meet the team. But if I don't meet that team, I will be transferred. And I will be the main head of the council and I'm going to make sure all the members are accounted for from a dollar to the million.
Thank you so much. I think we have a few more coming up here. So I'll start uh Ms. Walker with this one as well. How would you bring more people and commerce to Front Street?
How would you do that? I've been looking at other communities around us in the state of South Carolina and being a member of the municipal association of South Carolina. I've had the opportunity, we go uh visit other cities and counties and see what they have done to their businesses. And like I said, there are youth out here that have the creativity, even to bring an art studio, to bring a restaurant, a sandwich shop that you've never heard of and have the best sneaking sandwich you can ever have. How would you do that? Visit other cities that has like abandoned businesses, closed down. We create, create an incentive that if you collaborate and partner with us, we can bring some incentive to you all. With the youth, they are very, very viable today. Those youth are very, very viable. Their bodies, it's unbelievable. I don't even think I think of some things that they're going on, but I think of them and I think, well, that's a good word. But we should be open to trying something new downtown. Besides that, other things, other opportunities are out there. Tagging you, bring it downtown. What is it? You have that. The side, you put the air guns on it, you feel the music, you're looking at it, you know what I'm talking about. So you can do that. That's something that would bring a, you know, a different vibe, a better vibe. We all go do the same thing, the same way, and we all, we're sitting here with the same, you know. So we need to become a more creative thinking, more creative thinking, more creative thinking. And I have that in common.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
I believe in everything that Ms. Justin said. Um our youth are the ones we're losing. I'm never going to cage people for ones that we're losing. We need to bring something that will revitalize our brains as well as our bodies and our minds. A yoga studio, a sandwich shop, a art uh building, um anything that would actually help motivate people to do something differently. The, if it's just Front Street, I would refer that out into the Front Street. I would leave it right where it's at. Because it's so hard to adjust it. Let's move down a block a little bit. Just a little bit. We don't have to go far. This building is not a damn good area that we could use that will actually serve a purpose for everybody. So if we just move down two blocks, maybe we'll be able to uh outstretch our homes a little bit and make everybody a part of the beginning of something new on Front Street.
Thank you so much. And we do have some additional questions too. I will start with Ms. Milton again. How well is our city meeting the needs of children, adults, families, and five leisure activity options? What needs to be done and what is the problem, Ms. Milton?
Just like I just said, Ms. Justin, um let's move things down a block a little bit. Let's move things of everybody. There's a lot of things happening um in the downtown area. There's a lot of things that are happening. Uh there's not too much happening in like in the West End of the area. There's not a lot of things happening on the airport side of that area. We need to start branching out to meet those needs. Uh again, there are available buildings, but we need to learn how to partner with these people who own these buildings and see what we can do to satisfy the needs of the community. That's what I believe that we need to do for our community because the needs are not being met for everyone. Um the Y C A is too far, personally. That that's just me. I used to walk to the Y C A in Arizona, but I was in a head of city. What is there for these children to walk to that will keep them busy and safe? That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, second question?
As I said, I am representing all three cities. The West End, I shared some information from my thoughts a few months ago and been sharing. The West End is a booming section of the city of Georgetown, so they didn't have to leave their communities. And now on the West End, they have to leave to even go by asking. They have to go across town to buy a different door. But let me credit that there is one business that's still there in the West End room. So what I would like to see, those property owners, have they been approached as an owner and an heir? Have you thought about opening up a little cafe within the West End? Have you thought about bringing a bank to the West End? That's possible because they were, they give a deposit, they were, they're gonna come across High Line Street or go downtown Front Street, go to another community, the Maryville community. Isn't there a representation center over there? A place where they can come from six to six A M to six P M, just to hang out? Is it on the uh airport side? It could be because we have buildings on that side that we can utilize. Even if we just ask someone, let us take this house that you have been using twenty-five years and let us convert this into an after school center. Can we do it? Yes, we can. If elected, I would do my best to put forth and plan to make it happen. It's not about meeting, it's about taking action.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, continuing with you. The city of Georgetown has always relied on a report of fiscal viability. And over the years, tourism has had a playing a more of a role to the city's bottom line. What do you think is the healthy path needed to make the city continue to thrive for decades to come up?
I don't think that's an only a city issue. We need to collaborate and partnership with the county and see what's more viable. Who is that entity? What can we do with that to make it beneficial one hundred percent? I don't have all the answers to that because of what I've read and understanding that tourism is coming, but that is not going to say what's needed here within the city limits of Georgetown. Not saying we can stop it, but we can slow it down and make sure that work is one hundred percent usable to every resident that lives in the city of Georgetown.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
It's it's strange that you asked that question about tourism and I had a conversation with someone earlier about tourism. Uh in the county, there are so many walkable paths. Uh, in the county, there are so many walkable paths that if we could partner with the county and the city, tourism would be what's so bad. Because we're sharing that wealth of it. So if we can just, again, go up the block a little bit and share that, tourism is like, as Ms. Milton said, we can't stop it. So let's enjoy it and let's embrace it. Let's, let's put out a walking trail for the county. It starts in the city, but it starts when you can go down into the county. Let's make it work. Let, let us make it work for us. Make it make sense. If we're going to have to give up something to give something, let us go ahead and partner with people who already have these trails. Beautiful trails. I didn't know about it until I was, um, doing some kind of an election. But anyway, long story short, they are beautiful trails that can be utilized for tourism that the city and the county can partner with. So that it won't be such a heavy burden just on the city limits.
Okay, um, new question. Ms. Milton. The West End redevelopment plan of two thousand and three sat on a floor in a shell for twenty plus years. And it's had opportunities to be implemented to better service residents. What would you do to ensure this plan is updated and implemented where possible? And will this be a priority list elected?
I'm really looking on how to do that. Um, I would have to actually look into it and go into that much in my city. Just the head that is set on a shell for, since two thousand and three, it wasn't implemented, nothing happened with it. Those ideas are gone now. Rearing out in twenty twenty-five. So anything that needs to be done, it needs to be done with this year's ideas and visions. Because two thousand and three is gone, we can't keep that back. So let's work towards the future. So on a priority list, I would definitely put it on a priority list with the help of other people guiding me on what we can and can't do. Because that's going to be the, the living thing. Can, can you put a roller coaster over there? No, you can't. There are hurricane areas. Can we, you know, make another, come to a white trail? No, because as far as it's too dangerous, wet areas, you can't. I need to know all of those things in order to answer that question in the best way possible. But yes, we need to do something.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, second question.
That is one of my number one priorities, um, knowing that I have to work and know what's ended up, that part, that is one of my priorities to me to address. And as you said, it's been twenty-something years. But the plan is still there. And I don't think it should sit idle no longer. It needs to be updated, of course, because of the change of life. But we need to not only update it, but we need more groups, individuals that has that vision and make it happen. Make it happen. Let's make it happen. So yes, that is one of my number one priorities. Because when we update that plan, that can boost our economy. Bring in more jobs, opportunities, bring in more community and vibrant resources.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, you're up. Do you believe that there is a necessity of economic, uh, within the city of Georgetown? If so, what would your audience think of all parts of the community being that they are fairly and adequately represented?
We are rural in our culture. We have grown in our culture. And the social, economic divide, I see it, I live it. But we need to come together and bring it into it. Such as, um, utility bills. And what do I mean by that? I've shared many times before that we have bills and we can budget ourselves on what our actual bill is. Such as, you pay fifty dollars a month for your cell phone. Regardless, I'm not going to talk, text you. You got Chrome shows, you pay the same. My mom, unless you never asked, it, it increased, but you budget for that. Social, economic divide, because incomes, we all have our fixed incomes. Our paychecks are the same every week. The senior citizens, their check is the same. But they can budget. They budget because they know what their bills are every month. I start with saying we are equal because it's provide equal opportunities to all. Every one utility bill, you're the same every month. Because you can budget for that. But if your bill is two hundred dollars this month and then it's nine hundred dollars next month, you didn't budget for that. You did not. Your income hasn't changed. It's still the same. But you can budget for fixed incomes and fixed bills. You can go in for that. Can you all buy? Make it make sense to me. Make it make sense to me. We have social, economic divide. A lot of our employees, folks, working class, make at minimum or right at minimum wage. We have social, economic divide. And they all deserve the opportunity to live a comfortable life, decent and affordable living.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
There's a lot of retired people that came to Georgetown. There's a lot of people who, um, came to live a better life in a sense because of the fact that they are on a steady income. So to be comfortable, you have to, you have to look into where you're at right now. Right now, we're, um, that country is not going to change yet. It's not what we could have predicted it to be. Uh, the divide is, is not a big divide. We're all struggling. It is, is, it's a fact that when it comes down to we get monies for our cities, that we need to be fair with our resources and make sure that they're divided equally amongst them so that we can help everybody in those areas. Because if we did one area more money than, than the next and the other area is flooded, what are we going to do? We need to separate, be fair, be transparent. Um, the, we, we just really need to start thinking about what's best for, you is going to be best for me.
Thank you so much. And that's the end of our four questions. So maybe I want to give each of you a chance with your closing thoughts at the end. And Ms. Milton, since we started with Ms. Walker last time, we're going to start with you this time.
Okay, um, thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for giving the opportunity to answer some of the most hardest questions I believe in my life. I've never been on a platform like this before. I'm taking a big risk and doing what I'm doing. The, the reason why I said I take the big risks is because there's just so much in life that's going to happen after I win this election, that I pray that whatever comes, I will be able to handle it. And with the help of my community, my family and my friends, I will be able to get through it. I see a big and brighter future for Georgetown. And I might be overreaching, I might be reaching for those stars, but the one thing that I will say is that I am so happy that I chose Georgetown to be a place that I decide to stay and live out of my mind. Because I'm content, I'm happy, and I'm invited to be content and happy making. Because that's the only way that this community, and that's what we are, a community, will grow.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Walker, your final thoughts to that?
My final thoughts are, I will share that I'm, I'm a community person. Um, I've been public, um, political, it's never been my forte. But the person who I am, I love my city so much. I care about my city so much, and I believe in my city so much. Um, I am a social bug. And what I want to do is bring our community together. We are a human race. I don't want us to be divided no longer. Looking at what this culture does, what that culture does, what this race does, what that race does. We all live in the same city under one race, and we are all human. And we need to start living together, fellowshiping together. If I'm elected, that's my thing to do. Fellowship with all the mankind, because you deserve that. Your problems are my problems. I'm just an average citizen. I've been working today and I come home and I hush, and I hush. But I know I'm a hermolying god that we will all come together as one.